Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30, March 22nd. I will go ahead and call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item for approval is the approval of the agenda. Would like to note that there is an agenda addition request on a, from our highway engineer. I'd like to move that right after his number 11 item.
Move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the presented agenda with the agenda addition by Commissioner Gross, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is granted. The next item is citizens to be heard portion of this morning's meeting. Are there any citizens present wishing to address the board on anything that is not on the agenda? Steve, have you had any correspondence from citizens for this item?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item this morning is the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the bills and vouchers, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is granted. Also presented in the packet this morning are the minutes from the March 8th meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the minutes from March 8th, a second by Commissioner Campbell. Are there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item two this morning is a request to fill a vacancy for our legal assistant position in the Clay County Attorney's Office. Attorney Melton, good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I do have a departure coming up. My paralegal came and provided two weeks' notice to go take a different position. We've had a paralegal within the office before. We've also had six, up to six, legal assistants. I think at this time, just looking at the makeup of the office, where we're at for trials and everything else, a legal assistant would be a better fill for this position. The legal assistance on the lower line than the paralegal position, so there would be a money savings. It is budgeted. We have had up to, again, six, so we have five currently. So I am asking to fill the position as a legal assistant position.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Move to approve the legal assistant position.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the requested position, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? Just would like to extend my appreciation for looking at what exactly the needs are and filling based on what that need is. So thanks for being flexible.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three this morning is our annual department update from our building maintenance facilities director, Joe Olson. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, Board members. All right, just gonna give you a touch on the highlights of our department this morning. If you remember, a year ago, we had a few retirements. We did a little restructuring and currently, right now, I have Brian Friedrich as operations supervisor, runs the daily stuff, daily, day-to-day stuff, runs the power plant, runs the maintenance crew. Been very happy. He's been doing a real good job with that. And then he works directly with Gentlin Roethlisberger, who is our custodian lead. And that position we had last year has been very crucial. She's, in this time when we're short staff with custodian, she's been able to fill in and kinda organize and keep every, the daily nights, the night stuff filled in. So, and then Betty Hanson is my facilities assistant. She runs the mailroom, does all that stuff. When she's gone, life's a lot harder for me. So, those are the three that we restructure. That's the team I work directly with and been very happy with them and appreciate the support of the board doing that restructure here and going. It's been working well. So, as far as our staff numbers, actual staff numbers, we got one operations supervisor, one custodial lead, one facility assistant, five full-time maintenance techs, one variable hour maintenance tech, six full-time custodians, two part-time custodians, and 12 variable hour custodians. So, just, that's our crew that we have. Couple things to note that I was wanting to bring during budget year this year as a request is the possibility of adding another maintenance staff. I think when we added the jail and LEC, I was asked, "Do you think you need more staff?" And at that point, I felt it was good to hold off. I thought it was a good move. Now that we've went over to the government center, we're just really feeling that stretch in that department. So, just wanted to bring that up as a potential request. And then the custodian full-time, as far as what we have going on, right now, we have the 12 variable hour custodians. Right now, we have 10 filled. I don't think we've been to 12 for many weeks, probably within a year even. It's been real hard that way. Variable hours are something we really wanna keep on and we feel they're, they're good and they work well with us. But I'm maybe proposing that we take a couple of variable hour positions and merge them into full-time. We don't get any, we don't get any, actually, it's been a positive and we hardly have any turnover in the full-time custodian crew, so, and there's a group that is always kinda working for full-time there. So, just something that I wanted to bring it up, put on your radar, but more to come on that. So, a couple of the budget notes here, just wanted to let you know, the new buildings, the LEC and the jail, right now, the warranty phases are coming off of a lot of the equipment and stuff, so I'm tracking the custodian equip, I mean, the LEC and jail equipment repair line items, seeing a little bit of an increase there. What was covered is now, it seems like we're, if, you know, fan motor goes out, we pay for it now rather than warranty stuff. So, there's some budget stuff I'm tracking there as well. And then as the custodial supplies, I'm seeing a real big increase in that, so we're gonna be meeting with some suppliers. I think it's been a few years now, but we're gonna meet with different types and do sort of a request for proposal and do some price checking amongst all the supplies we do. We purchase a lot of stuff, so I think it's a good time to look into that as well. So, and then XL gas or the gas is definitely something I'm tracking. That's probably the biggest increase I'm seeing around here. So, just throwing those at you. As far as the facilities, we have 22 facilities right now. We, as you know, we don't have the old DMV up north. We did a land trade there and we've currently moving into the new storage facility, April 1st. As far as the family service center, we're 100% occupied there, almost 100% occupied there. But we're working on the two major projects, moving child support up to fourth floor and possibly a dental expansion into that existing area on first floor. So, working that deal out as well. And then as far as the government center, it's been, that's a good building. It's in good shape. The one thing we're looking at is, is some of the units in the back are in rough shape. We're looking at pricing that up, working directly with the building committee on that to price that up and see how we could possibly replace those. Other than that, I'm gonna keep it simple. Just appreciate both the building committee and the board for their support over this last year. And let's see, questions for me?
I just wanna clarify what the units in the back are.
Oh, so there's eight units in the back that are the heating and cooling. They do both. And we used to be like a strip mall type scenario there. And so there's eight of them that serve certain areas. We've had troubles with heating and cooling, both in the winter and the summer. So, I'm actually working with an engineer. We've kind of come up with a plan, but currently out for pricing right now and gonna bring that back to the building committee to take a look at it, so.
Joe, I just, I know that I've said this to you personally, but I publicly wanna say the grounds under your management and your team look phenomenal at all times and you do such a great job of addressing any need immediately. I feel like whenever I bring something to your attention, you have it fixed or you're on it in a short amount of time. So, thank you very much for that and please extend that to your team as well.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, well, keep up the great work. You have the next item, which would be a request for approval of lease program for county vehicles. Is Lori coming up for this or just you?
Moral support.
Moral support, okay. All right. Okay, so, just a little history on this one. Currently, right now, and actually in the memo, I say that we have 14 fleet vehicles. We actually have 15, correction there. When I say the fleet vehicles, these are the vehicles, the 15 fleet vehicles that departments actually rent out from us, the mailroom. We then bill that, we then bill them, and then that's how the money comes back to pay for that program. So each department pays per miles every time they use it. So, as a little history, I think prior, I think six years, I think it goes back even further, not 100% sure, but we've been leasing seven vehicles for the past six years. And when I say lease, just to explain, this isn't your conventional lease where you make a payment and there's a term out. This is actually, we make a lease payment, but we get the equity back at the end when we sell the vehicle. So, we have a certain amount, four-year lease that we would sign per vehicle and then at the end, we sell that. But there's a lot of flexibility in between as we have ability to sell it before the four years or we can hold on to it too as well. But the end game is to sell the vehicles at their highest value and recapture back that money and roll it back into our account, our internal services accounts. So, what I'm proposing on the spreadsheet, you see, you see the fleet, a list of fleets, and then you see kind of a list of various departments that don't include the highway and the sheriff's department. They're just kind of the assessors, you know, those kind. And the reason why we put this list together is enterprise needs a 20-car minimum to even do business with us. I think over the years, the goal was to get us to 20, but they don't, they lose money when they don't have 20. So it's, they've reached out and said, "Hey, you know, we're, we've been doing this for a while and we don't think we can continue unless we have a 20-car minimum." Having said that, we looked at this. We've, we've liked leasing the seven cars. It's worked well. And I had enterprise do a, what would this do to our budget if we had these 23 vehicles that we put in here? This is including the maintenance pickups and stuff. And he is basically, you know, right now, our budget, we internal service, 100, our annual budget is $153,035. And one thing I think really wanted to note there, so we're clear, is Lori and I and Steve, we've worked on, we think a 10 cent increase is needed when we build these departments 'cause it's been many, many years and we're behind there. So, we've added that 10 cent increase into this. So, what was $135,035 is $153,035 for our budget. So, that's, that's what, so $153,000 is what we'd be budgeting. And then our proposed annual lease payments are $140,520. That would be annually when we sign these leases. And then, yeah, that'd be, we'd sell these 23 vehicles and we'd actually have just under two years of no payments. And when I say no payments, we make the lease payment, but we're building the equity and rolling that money that we sell the cars into the account. So, I guess the pros on this is that we're projected in five years, enterprise to save $91,000. So today, I'm requesting to move forward with this, but I know there's probably lots of questions, so.
Thank you for that. Joe, Steve does have a comment.
Joe, do you wanna talk a little bit about the maintenance piece?
Yes, the maintenance piece. So, right now, we roughly spend about $16,000 on, you know, if a car goes down or we had to fix a pump or something on a car. All the maintenance would be covered in this. So the only thing not covered in this would be oil changes for each vehicle. And in each, each budget, each individual budget has a line, auto line that we would say, we keep a little bit of that money in there just to cover oil changes and stuff, but everything else is fully covered. So, the goal would be to not have any, any maintenance costs, minimal maintenance costs. And, and then also, they're proposing that by driving, rotating through these new vehicles every two to three years, we're dropping the saving, we're saving on fuel economy as well 'cause you're constantly driving newer vehicles, so.
We did talk about this. Commissioner Campbell and I talked with Lori and Steve and yourself about this. And I, I think my hesitation at first was, it seemed like it was too good to be true. I felt like we had a pretty good system and not wanting to upset the apple cart, but it, you have done an enormous amount of work in working with the agent in terms of pulling together the finance piece and it really does seem like this is an opportunity for us to not only retain newer vehicles and, and deal with some of those ongoing costs, but save the county a substantial amount of dollars.
Yeah.
My only comment would be, I do know that it's, there are other departments that have their own fleet vehicles that are not on this. And I really think that in order for us to save the taxpayers the most amount of money, we should really think seriously about adding those departments. Not sure where the discussion is. Maybe that's a Steve question, but, you know, if we were able to save almost $91,000 on, on these vehicles, that can only go up.
Madam Chair, we have worked with our sales representative from enterprise and they are in the process of running some numbers on different departments.
Great. Commissioner Gross.
Explain to me how we lease a vehicle, then we sell it. How do you sell a leased vehicle?
Yeah, it's a, so, and another question that's within that question is, how do they make money? And they make money by, they like a long period of time and small margins. So they have a little bit built into that lease payment and that's how they make their money and that's why they need their 20-car minimum. But it's our equity, is what it is. So, they're leasing it, we're building, so they make the money through that little bit of a lease payment, but yet we still own the equity, yeah. So, it's not really that conventional lease. It's, we have, we keep the equity. So, again, it does sound too good to be true, but that's how they make their money and that's why they need a 20-car minimum. So, so, the other benefit at this point is used vehicles have never been so high. So, the number you see here is pretty conservative. They feel like they can make more money on our used vehicles too. So, the goal would be to capture that extra money on there and that, the more money we make on there, the, I guess, the less, the more we buy on the backend for lease payments. So, so, yeah, we keep the equity. There's an account, I did check into, you know, is there any fees when they go to sell this? There's none. We keep it, we keep it all. We actually track when our cars are sold and when the money comes back to us, they actually cut us a check and, and it goes right back into our account, so.
And because we've, we've rented our lease before, the seven vehicles, we know that to be true.
Yes, yes. When I first took over the leases, I was wondering why I was getting checks back and like, "How are we doing this?" And then I, as I looked into it, "Okay, well, we sold the vehicle, we get the equity." So, it has been working for the seven vehicles and it saves money, apparently, so. The other thing too, I, I'll be watching this on a quarterly basis, working directly with enterprise, so I can, I can see every year if we're hitting our mark or we're on track for that $91,000 saving, so.
Steve.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I did reach out to three counties that currently utilize this program, Polk, Malax, and Itasca. All of, all have stated that the information that's been provided to them as, as part of the, the sales pitch has come true through the first, the first years. The benefits that they've talked about is they've, they've received a higher than, what, higher than normal payments for the resale of their, of their vehicle. They're saving extensive amounts of money in the repairs for their county. And, and that they've, they've indicated that enterprise is extremely responsive to, to working with them. So, they, they had nothing but, but positive things to say.
Other question.
If we bought five more vehicles, that would save more money, wouldn't it?
The more vehicles you add, or?
I mean, five would be just about right now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I get it.
Commissioner Ebinger.
This may be directed to Steve, but who are the departments that are not participating in this and is your reason why?
Right now, the only, the two major departments are, would be the sheriff's department and highway. And so.
I know Dave Overbow has, has expressed to take a look at this as well. So, I've actually not sat down directly with him, but he has reached out to me and said he'd like to see what it costs. And enterprise is able to just take his stuff and run the numbers the same as he did here. So, I know he's interested in that as well, so.
Just an observation, having worked for a police department prior to this one, the investigative cars and the, and the staff cars were leased.
Yeah.
I understand that when you have a marked unit, you wanna get a police package, but I don't know if enterprise can, can get police packages.
Yeah, they do. They, they definitely do. And I think this rep is working directly with Mark right now. I think he's running the numbers on exactly what's going on there as well. So, I think Mark has his, he's looking at how he wants to do it, but he, I think I've connected those two to talk about it and to see what, it's a little bit different world it sounds like, but they can do it, so.
What is the max, I'm sorry. What is the maximum amount of vehicles? I know they like to do small, small market, but maximum, we can work with them or is that not enough?
Oh, we, as many vehicles as we want. Yeah, as, they, this is a, 20 cars is actually a small account for them. They have.
That's their minimum.
Yeah, that's their minimum, but they have, they work with large, large amounts. So, the other thing there is, right now, it's very hard to get vehicles. We're finding that right now, vans, we can't get for two years. Enterprise has a, seems like they got a better reach out there on getting vehicles quicker. One thing to note here too is, we currently drive a bunch of vans that social services will pick up people. We can't get vans for two years, but we're proposing to go to a traverse, which is with an open seat that has a van layout almost to it. It's a little bit safer and all-wheel drive and we just feel, and then the cars will be replaced with an Equinox. So, we're just feeling it's a good time to put a little bit safer cars on the road as well, so, vehicles, so.
Commissioner Campbell.
Well, yeah, this was presented to our finance committee to go over and it's kinda hard to argue with, with the numbers. I, I would, I would point out one area that we haven't looked at. I have a truck that's eight years old and it's got 133,000 miles on it. My maintenance might be up a little bit, but I'm not making any payments on it.
Right.
You know, so, so at some point in time, you know, that, that maybe needs to be weighed in here on, on what we're doing because certainly the $12,500 a year in savings compared to what we currently pay.
Yep.
But what if we had, were done paying and just had repairs?
Yep, yeah.
You know, obviously, we still want the fleet to be appropriate and safe for everybody who uses them. That's, you know, I'm, again, mine's got the kinda miles on it and I just drove to Frisco, Texas with it in the vineyard and it worked just fine.
Yep, yep, yep.
But it's just something to, it's just something to be, that we need to monitor going forward to that.
Yeah. We can, we can de-fleet at any time too. If we feel we have too many cars, we can de-fleet. And we can take each car, if there's an additional car, and put your theory to that and say, "Does it belong in the, in this program or does it just, is this one that doesn't get driven as much?" And we can, so, we can test both worlds too on this.
I would appreciate that and I think our taxpayers would appreciate that as well. I think that would just make sense.
Okay.
Another item to highlight is that we did talk about departments that may have a vehicle that they don't use. As frequently, we could eliminate one department having a vehicle and combine with other departments.
Yep.
And there is flexibility with this plan for that. And I, I agree. I think that there is, you have to weigh the, the pros and cons of all of it, but certainly in a year where we had 11 blizzards, the roads oftentimes were very difficult to drive on. Upgrading these to the all-wheel drive, four-wheel drive is really important. I certainly don't want a home visitor to get stuck because of a, you know, an insufficient vehicle. But we'll just, like I said, I think it felt too good to be true, but upon further diving, it looks like it is the real deal. We have the flexibility to decommission if we need to or go another direction, so.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we accept the contract with enterprise fleet program for the vehicles as listed in this spreadsheet.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the contract with the enterprise fleet program for the vehicles that are listed in the packet.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. And I'm hopeful that we will be able to add more vehicles if it makes sense.
I'll keep, I'll look into that and I'll keep the facilities finance committee updated as well as the board on how this goes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five this morning is our planning and zoning requests. Our planning director, Matt Jacobson, is here for two items, an approval of a recommendation to appoint a planning commission member and a board of adjustment member. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So, here before you with a couple of requests today. First, for the planning commission, the planning commission has, we lost a member, Steve Mortensen, from, from Barnesville who is moving. And so he's done a fantastic job on, on the planning commission. We're gonna miss him. But he is his final act, found a replacement, which was very, very nice. And so, at their meeting last week, the planning commission made a recommendation to the board to appoint Brent Berg from, from Barnesville. Brent serves on the Barnesville Planning Commission. He's the chair. He's a lifelong resident of Barnesville and I think he'd bring a lot of good knowledge and experience to the planning commission.
Yes. That was a unanimous recommendation and Brent is a great community member and Clay County resident, so he would be a great addition to the planning commission. Commissioner Girl, or Campbell?
Yeah, I was at the planning commission meeting when he was introduced to the, to the members of the planning commission and I, and I was impressed with his interview and I was impressed with his experience. And I think he would be a good addition to that board. I would, I would move the appointment.
There is a motion to approve the appointment from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted.
Thank you.
Great. The next piece is Leo.
Yes. So, the board of adjustment is looking for, for two members, so this would be one of the two. Paul Krabenhoff, who's been on the board and on the planning commission, and I think he had pieced together 20-plus years of, of service on, on both the planning commission and the board, so just wanna thank him for, for that and all that he's done to contribute to, to Clay County. And our, we, the planning commission does have a new chair, Ezra Bear, so Ezra became the chair of the board of adjustment as well. And so, looking to kinda fill his spot too. And at their meeting, the, last week, the board of adjustments, or, yeah, the board of adjustment made a recommendation to appoint Leo Sponskowski to the board. He's from Yulin Township. He's on the Yulin Town Board, the chair, and he's a longtime resident of Clay County as well. And I think he'd being, bring a good perspective to, to the board of adjustment.
Great. And I also will say that it is great to see individuals from a variety of areas within Clay County wanting to be part of this, these boards. Certainly nice to have some northern and southern representation in both of these appointments if granted this morning. Board wishes.
Move, okay. Move for acceptance to this candidate, word of adjustment.
We have a motion to approve the request from Commissioner Ebinger.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is number six, our annual department update from our solid waste manager, Kirk Rosenberger. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second stop in the farewell tour, so I thank you very much. This'll sound pretty familiar to what you heard yesterday and I apologize, but I'll try and give you a Reader's Digest version. Hopefully, my voice will be a little stronger than it was yesterday. I'm still running about 60%, which is better than 100% for most people. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to that. At any rate. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to that. At any rate, the annual report for the solid waste department is, the solid waste department essentially has, is funded through the, an enterprise fund. Enterprise fund is completely different than general fund. We're not funded by the general fund, any kind of tax levy at all. It's really, really important for taxpayers to understand that. We run this just as a business, just exactly like a business. The, the way it's funded primarily is through a tipping fee. And tipping fee is what you pay at the landfill when you dump the, the garbage at the landfill. We also have a service fee. A service fee is the amount of money that's on your taxes every year. And we also receive money through a SCOR funding through the state. We only receive about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, but our amount that we provide to the local communities is in excess of four hundred thousand dollars. So there's a large commitment, obviously, by the, the board for recycling to the communities and the opportunity to do that. We also receive a household has waste grant, very, very small grant, and also paint care, which pays for a lot of the paint recycling that we do. Out of the landfill, we have five people working at the landfill. There's, do assorted activities from driving truck to take garbage from transfer station over to Perm, to driving truck to take leachate or the landfill coffee over to Fargo to be treated. And then also run the compactor and other activities out there. It was a pretty tough winter out there at the landfill, as it was every place else. It was cold. Everything broke down or didn't start. So it was a real challenge for the guys out there. The stuff broke down. It was just a really, really tough, tough winter. Now the spring has come and there's snowdrifts where the, snowdrifts haven't been for years and years and years. And it's switched places. One, one time is on the west side of the landfill. Next day, I was on the east side of landfill. And in the middle, right now, is a big mud pile. So they're spending a lot of time pulling trucks out of the mud pile and trying to keep people moving in and out of there. It's, it's quite the mess right now. It's quite the challenge. The solid waste department basically has one person works with recycling. That's Shannon Thompson. One person in household has waste, that's Julie Kennedy. Five folks out at the landfill, Tori Bang, Wayne Lethizer, Ross Olson, Ryan Peterson, and Brett Rice. I have two roster employees that are helping with electronics. We're short of one roster employee over at the household has waste. And then myself, and I just try and keep out of their way. They're doing the real work. I just try and stay out of their way. The landfill, these are some statistics that you all might be interested in. We had about a thousand pounds of egg containers that we recycled last year. Very, very significant. It's a pretty popular program. And that increases every year and, and we're glad that folks participate in it. We disposed approximately two and a half tons of garbage and other material out at the landfill. Very, very significant amount of material. In addition, we took about eight, eight-four-hundred tons of garbage over to Perm, as I mentioned before, on an annual basis. The Perm facility is working very well, finally, and it's doing really, really, really well. As we talked about previously, we had a new cell construction out at the landfill. It's about a three, three-and-a-half million dollar project. Put in thirteen new gas wells and new leachate lines, new gas lines and things like that. And the, the cell itself is filling up very, very quickly. It's much faster than what I anticipated. When we constructed the cell, we, we estimated that life of the cell would be five to eight years. But I think it's going to probably be on the five-year side rather than the eight-year side. The other thing that we're working on right now is we have a landfill project that we're trying to finish up. It's been quite a challenge, to say the least. It's a combination of supply chain issues and, and getting the material there. And, and then there's some technical issues as well. We're about ready to get our third project manager on that landfill construction site. So it's, it's been very, very, very frustrating for me. I think we're getting a little closer on that. I mean, I think we've got some folks' attention anyway and, and I think we're moving in the right direction. As far as the household has waste.
Can I interrupt you a quick?
Sure.
In terms of the flare, I've had some community questions on when, and is that part of the, the challenge that we're dealing with? Getting that flare going? What is our, the timeline that we're hearing and what more support do we need to give to make that happen?
Madam Chair, I think the, there's a couple of issues related to the flare itself. I mean, the flare itself runs, but it runs intermittently. There's an issue with gas supply. And we have plenty of gas out there right now, but getting it to the, the flare has been the challenge. Essentially, what's happening is, is that there's water in, in the gas lines that shouldn't be in the gas lines. And right now, everybody's trying to determine where that's coming from, how it's getting in there and things like that. I think that that's the, the biggest issue that we have to deal with right now. I've been really frustrated with both Burns and Mack and Comstock. I mean, they're sitting there pointing fingers at each other and we haven't really come up with any, any way to fix the problem. I think at the SWAC meeting, we're going to have Comstock come and talk to the, the group and, and hopefully they can provide some more answers, answers. But right now, I mean, it's been very, very frustrating for me.
Is there an estimate on how, how much that's costing the county?
Madam Chair, from right now, we have not paid them for probably three or four or five months. I, I haven't paid them anything because it's, it's, we don't have a project. I mean, what we have now are we have pipes that aren't working. We have a boiler that's works intermittently. And so we're not paying them anything. As far as I can tell right now, I mean, there aren't going to be any additional cost. I mean, it's going to be part of the, the project because essentially they were given a, a task to do and they haven't done it. And so until they do that, then, then we're, we're not going to pay them and we're not going to pay them anymore. Some of the things that, you know, I've talked to them about and, you know, to try and get their attention. I've talked to Comstock about firing them and hiring somebody else. I've talked about liquidated damages. You know, I've talked about all those things. It gets their attention for about, you know, a week or two and then they kind of go on to their other projects. So I think that, you know, I think the discussion on Thursday will be pretty enlightening for everybody. As far as the, the household has waste, the, the collection at the household has waste was up from last year. It was, it was pretty, pretty positive in that regard. It was up about three thousand pounds over two thousand twenty. The national average per household has waste collected is about thirty to forty pounds. And Clay County household has waste collection rate was about forty-seven pounds last year. So folks are using the facility. That's a good positive thing. And I, I think that with our new facility, I think that will be used even more. So I think it's a really good program for the folks. We also had, and I, I think I mentioned this before, we had mobile collections last year at both Holly and Barnesville for both electronics and for household has waste. We intend to do that again this year as well. So I think folks will definitely participate in those as well. I know they were very well received. I've been at all those and they've been very well received. And, you know, people appreciate that we come out and take the time to do that. And I certainly appreciate my staff coming out and, and helping out on that as well. As far as the recycling, the, the numbers are pretty staggering in, in some ways. The electronics, we recycled about a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds of computers and TVs and printers and fluorescent bulbs and, you know, all kinds of things, not fluorescent bulbs, but holiday lights and things like that. So it's a fairly significant amount. The bulbs, as I mentioned, fluorescent bulbs, we recycled about eleven thousand individual bulbs. Ballast, we recycled about five hundred and seventy-five pounds. For recycling itself, the cardboard was down by about a hundred and twenty-five tons, but the commingled material is up to about a hundred and forty tons. And we recycled about forty-five hundred tons as a county last year. So that's, that's fairly significant as well. As far as the, the batteries, these are rechargeable batteries that we also recycle out there. We recycled five hundred and sixty-one pounds of batteries. Again, that's, that's pretty significant. We do not want these batteries in the landfill, particularly the lithium batteries. We did have two landfill fires out there this year. And the, the cause or the suggested cause or the thought cause or whatever was from the compactor running over these lithium batteries, sparking the, the batteries and got into mattresses out there and then we had a fire. So it's not really, really good all in all. As far as things to do, some of these things I hope to get done before I, I depart. Obviously, finishing the resource recovery campus is huge. I mean, I, you know, I encourage folks to drive by out there. I mean, we actually have structures going up. I know Commissioner Campbell and I, you know, we, we both got really pretty excited. You know, I mean, it's, it's different when you have a hole in the ground, you have concrete coming up, but you actually see structures out there. It's, it's really, really, really pretty impressive. And so that's, that's really positive. We are running into, and I think Commissioners will talk about this, we are running into some additional expense from the winter because, you know, it was a tough winter, so we are having some additional cost out there. We are talking to the Pollution Control Agency about possibly trying to get some additional money. As you all know, we receive seven point five million dollars. We asked originally eight point five, but we only got seven point five. But we could really use that extra million, maybe extra two million to, to help us out on that. The second thing that really needs to be done is we need to figure out what to do with the demolition material. We're going to get more and more demolition material. One of the things that's been discussed at the state is the state's talking about requiring all demolition landfills to align their sites. As you all know, we have a private demolition landfill in the county. But I have been told by the, the owners of the demo site that if they're required to have a liner, that they're going to turn the key and, and shut it down. So at that point, we're going to have to figure out what to do. We could certainly take it into the cell that we currently have. We could do an additional cell. It's, it's something that we really need to talk about. One of the problems with, if, if we take it in the additional cell is you get a hydrogen sulfide gas that can be fairly adverse to the, the folks out there. Right now, we have a fairly high level of that. My folks are always protected. You know, they have individual alarms in case they get too much of that, that gas. So that's something that we need to talk about. The second thing, and this is ongoing, contaminated soil. Contaminated soil is primarily petroleum contaminated soil. And PCA has been pretty tough. We use it for alternative daily cover, but we, we also get fines from Perm. We also get ash from American Crystal. We get sawdust as well. So we, we have plenty of alternative daily cover. And so we really need to figure out what to do with this contaminated soil. I was talking to a inspector yesterday at the township meeting from North Dakota and they're also struggling with what to do with that as well. So that's something that we need to, to, to take a hard look at. The other thing that I think is going to be a long-term problem, and you've heard me talk about this, I'm, I'm sure you're pretty sick of me talking about this, but PIFAs are forever chemicals and these things are found every place. I mean, I mean, they're found in firefighting foam and found in Scotchgard. I mean, it's found virtually everywhere. By the time it gets to the landfill, it's really too late to try and address it. And so I think the state is trying to deal with it a little further upstream. But we're going to have to try and do something with the leachate where the, the PIFAs are turning up. Right now, there are no health standards in the state of Minnesota for PIFAs or any kind of standards whatsoever, but I fully anticipate that at some point in time. And the net result is, is that I, I think that there's going to be some kind of requirement for some kind of a pre-treatment, which there really isn't any good pre-treatment. But I think there's going to be a, a requirement for the pre-treatment of the leachate before it actually goes over to Fargo for, for final treatment. And again, that'll add to an additional expense. The final thing I think that will be talked about, and I thank Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo for understanding my position on this. This, this discussion will take place after I leave. And that's the tipping fee and the service fee. I fully anticipate that you're going to need to have an increase of, of that. Again, that's just one guy's opinion. Five year, or two years ago, I thought we should raise it ten dollars a ton, five dollars the first year and then five dollars the second year. We did not raise it the first year because of COVID. I was concerned about what kind of impact it would have on, on folks and, and nobody knew what was going on with COVID. So we did not raise it. Last year, we raised it three dollars. And that was kind of a wrestling battle with the Commissioners, but the Commissioners have the vote, so I lost. I got pinned. But I, I think that we're going to have to have that discussion again this year as well. So with that, I could talk forever. And it's a good thing I'm only running sixty percent rather than a hundred percent because I would talk forever. But stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kirk. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. A couple of things. First off, going to the conversations about MPCA and funding. When we, as a group, were at the legislative conference, we had the opportunity to talk with our local legislatures about the increased costs of this pro, the, this particular project as compared to what it is now. And that that seven point five million dollars at one time was supposed to be a sixty, forty, or seventy, thirty, or something like that. And it's turned into be completely the opposite in terms of what we've, we've received in the grant dollars. And, you know, so I think, I was glad to hear and see the letter from Jeannie after our conversation yesterday. She sent something out to you, I believe, and we, we copied on that. And I really think it's appropriate. And I think we should move quickly on talking with construction engineers and anybody else who can forward us these dollars. We had significant increases based on metal costs, building costs and all those things that have risen drastically. And unfortunately, our grant stayed at the same percentage of the project, but our, or the same dollar amount, but our, our project cost went extremely higher. So, but I think we should probably have something that would be sent answered to Jeannie this week on what those dollar amounts are. And I think that should also be addressed to our local legislature so they're aware of it. I think there's going to be some discussion. And the same goes for, we also had the same conversation about the five million dollar grant that we've received on the, on the other facility that we're discussing right now. And, and just how significant is that can be compared to a total cost? And should those numbers also be adjusted to the costs? So those, I think, we'll work on this week. Hopefully, we can have something by Thursday, maybe, from SWAC or something, too. My other. Could you just briefly talk to about the new citizen drop-off area at the landfill?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I'll be brief, or I'll try to be brief. Essentially, this is a, a citizen drop-off that we, we have out at the, the landfill. It's basically a wall, a series of walls. And it accommodates folks that can go out there with a pickup and just drop off a pickup. But it also accommodates rear dump trailers and side dump trailers. What we had out there before was, you know, basically roll-off containers and it was pretty inadequate. And a part of the, the new project, we, we, we did this citizen drop-off. So, I mean, I think that was a really, really positive addition. It's been very, very well received and I think it's, it's been really, really a good, good project. One other thing, Ms. Chair, Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, and I, I don't know if you were going to address this as well, but one of the other legislative pieces that we're working on, and we're working with the, all the counties in the state, and that's SCOR funding. Essentially, SCOR funding is funded through the solid waste tax. And about thirty percent of the, the solid waste tax goes directly into the general fund and, which is kind of silly. Your gas tax, none of the percentage of your gas tax goes into the general fund. It goes towards transportation projects. And I think it's a position certainly of our board and I think virtually every other board in the, the state that feel that that thirty percent should go towards solid waste projects. So we've been working very, very closely with all the other counties to try and get that changed this year. And hopefully, this year will be the year that we'll be able to get that done. As a matter of fact, they were looking for volunteers to testify today down there at a, at a committee hearing. But unfortunately. down there at a, at a committee hearing. But unfortunately, you guys are meeting, so you couldn't, couldn't do it. But I will keep you up to speed on that. And also, you know, obviously, if we need to have somebody testify, I'll, I'll make the request.
Thank you. I, I just want to go back a little bit to what Commissioner Campbell had talked about in terms of the MPCA, working with Jeannie Given from the MPCA. He's correct. We did have conversations with Senator Ekin in regards to grants that were awarded to communities, and now the splits for what the local cost share has just gotten so lopsided. I think for the public listening, when we had gone, when we'd been awarded the funds and the Phase 2 construction estimate was about, what, 12.6? And last, then they estimated in 2020 that it was at 14.5. And now our Phase 2 costs are estimated at $21 million. And I agree with Commissioner Campbell. I think we need to work swiftly to respond to the MPCA about what, what our incurred costs are going to be based on estimates because of inflation. I would like us to respond in the next couple of days. I know we're, we're getting towards a deadline in the, in the hearing process, and I really think that it's important for us to advocate for, for what the inflation is costing the local taxpayers. And I, I'm not sure if it would be appropriate for this board to approve corresponding, you know, I don't know if we need to do that, but I think certainly we need to make a statement that, that, I don't know if the dollar amount is 3 million or 5 million, but based on what those incurred costs are from construction engineers, and Lori certainly can chime in on that, we can respond to that request.
Madam Chair, I hope to respond to her by today, actually. So, and I, and I think there's going to be an opportunity for, for many of the legislators to see our smiling faces down there again.
If I can, can, can we be sure to, if you're going to send something off, can we see those numbers before you send them?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, absolutely.
Yeah. So you don't feel like we need a board action to approve?
Madam Chair, it's really up to you, you know, if you feel that that's necessary.
Well, I, this is just one person's opinion, but I think that's important, it is important for us to send a statement to St. Paul and MPCA that we have incurred enormous costs to get this project rolling. The, the other side of the coin is that they've awarded all these grants to communities, and if, if the local shares don't have the money to, to finish projects, the state's going to have a lot of projects that are half-finished or half-planned.
Madam Chair, I should point out that that's, that is, that is indeed happening, is that many, many are not even moving ahead. And I don't know that that is really going to achieve what they're, they're hoped to achieve, because I think the costs are only going to increase the, for these people's projects.
Well, I then would suggest that this board approves through, if, if appropriate, Commissioner Campbell and myself, working with Steve and Kirk and Lori on formulating what that estimate of the costs are. I, close to $5 million to approve sending communication to MPCA. Commissioner Ebinger?
I'd make a motion under that effect if we get that worked.
Clear enough, clean. Can you glean what I just, thank you. Commissioner Ebinger makes a motion to support this board taking a stand on, on inflation costs and communicating towards the opportunity to maybe get further grants.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted. Thank you.
Finally, I just wanted to thank the board. I mean, I think the board has been very, very supportive of solid waste programs. You know, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo are on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and appreciate your, your input, and it's been very, very helpful. I think that, you know, we've made an awful lot of progress here in the last five, six years. And, you know, I mean, without your guys' support and direction, it wouldn't have happened. So thank you much.
Well, thank you for your work. Thanks for your crew's good work.
Glad you're feeling better, too.
I am, too. I'm, I'm not quite there, but we're almost there.
We'll get you there.
Yep.
Anything else? Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you much.
The next item is item number seven. I don't know, Kirk, if you want to stay for this one, because it's, if there's any questions. Request for approval for the change order number four for the resource recovery facility construction.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. We've had, we have two items for your consideration this morning, PR 003 and CP 005. PR 003, we've had extensive conversation at the board level already. If you recall, that has to do with the generator, backup generator added to the facility. We had discussions here and based on some of the concerns of being able to get that generator, this board took action on, on that earlier this year. We're actually just cleaning up, cleaning up that recommendation from the board and PR 003. CP 005 is, has to do with some utility additions that have taken place, water main issues, water main testing of those, testing of the water main issues, and also adding some rip wrap around our pond that's out there to ensure the, that it doesn't cave in on itself. And so those are the two items before you for your consideration. With that, I'd yield for.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'd like to speak to the backup generator issue. The, the, what we currently have planned for that is it would, it's coming out of our owner's contingency fund. And along, that and along with some other things, has put that, owner's contingency into the red. One of the, one of the areas when we, when we started talking about this generator was that we have a separate source of funds, and we've talked extensively with Lori Johnson about it. And, and those numbers, the premium dollars that we have are in excess of $800,000. So what, what I'd like to propose, and we've talked about, would, would be that we would reserve those premium dollars for this $235,000, or basically increase our, our owner's contingency fund by that amount using premium dollars. And the, the reason that we want to do it in that fashion is we, we do want to keep that as part of the project instead of happening outside of the project, because then we, we still qualify for all the warranty issues and all those types of things that go having it part of the project. So, Madam Chair, I would, I would move that we approve the 235-092 for the backup generator and, and setting aside and reserving premium bond, premium bond funds for its payment.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. We do have a motion to approve the request with a note of the change order would come out of premium dollars, correct?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Is there any further discussion on this item?
And if I can, Madam Chair, just to clarify, so that would, that would then put our owner contingency back in the black as well for any other, typically out of owner's contingencies in, in projects like this, it's requests on behalf of the owner that were not part of the original GMP, gross maximum price. And so that would allow us to still have some room, wiggle room for Kirk or somebody from our staff notices maybe a flaw in something that, or we want to change. We have that ability to do that. So I think it's.
And, and Madam Chair, Commissioners, just for, for the public knowledge, the premium dollars piece comes from when we took out the original bond. Because of our high rating, we had the ability to take additional dollars. Those dollars can only be spent on this project. And because of the uncertainty of, of what we knew we were facing even at the bonding time, it was something that this board determined and, and moving forward with. So it's important to understand that this, that the repayment portion of the bond, these premiums are all included within that.
Further comments?
And one last thing, just to coincide with that. So our financial plan and payback plan is not affected by this. That's, we've got to be clear on that, that
That's correct.
That we have a bond payment amount that we've already included in our budget process that'll be covered with our current collections that we have without having to ask for additional.
Any other comments or questions? There is a motion and a second on the table. I will ask all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you very much for your work on this. It is 9:30. We are scheduled to take a five-minute.
We, we have one, we didn't approve the $16,000 yet, though. I
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry.
I broke those down separately.
I'm sorry. When I clarified, I did say, it said change order number four. So.
Okay.
That's good with the motions?
When?
Well, I, my, my motion was taking them separately because of the explanation that I wanted to deal with that one. But, but, I mean, I can, we've already voted on it, but I guess.
I guess my, I, when you said that, I said, I'm clarifying that this is change order number four, which is what is all included. So if you feel okay with that, otherwise we can do an additional.
Okay. I, I, I guess I'm, I, I, I guess I didn't hear you make that comment.
I'm sorry. That's okay. The, I think just for the sake of clarity, then I didn't make the motion. Commissioner Campbell did. I would then offer for consideration a motion, or not offer, but request a motion for the remainder of that piece, then?
I would move the second half of change order number four.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell for the second piece of it, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, now we will break for five minutes. Thank you. That has been five minutes, so we will go ahead with item number nine on our agenda this morning, a request for approval of Resolution 2022-10, which would declare a state of emergency. Our emergency service director, Gabe Tweetin. Good morning, Gabe.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. So last Wednesday, I drafted this resolution, and things looked rather different out in Clay County. Yesterday, I did have the opportunity again to go out and survey the rivers and some of the roads. And I would still request that the resolution, that you consider passing a resolution. Just an update on conditions, checking the river gauges this morning, the Red River is currently at 18.33 feet in Fargo-Moorhead, which is in minor flood stage. Predicted to crest at 29.5 on Saturday into Sunday, which is just below major flood stage. The Buffalo River, which the gauge would be up north of Glendon-Dillworth, is at 11.25, which is in normal flood stage currently, but it's predicted to crest at, whoops, I think I typed out on that because I have 11.25. That is not correct. Let me look on. It's predicted to crest Thursday into Friday at 19 feet, which, which puts it into minor flood stage. And then the south branch of the Buffalo River, which is kind of the one that we tend to feel the effects of first in Clay County, this morning is at 13.27. The gauge, the flood gauge for that is in the Saban area. Yesterday, I did check it in the afternoon and was out checking roads down there, and it's went up a foot since yesterday. So it's currently in minor flood stage, predicted to crest Wednesday into Thursday at 14.8 feet. And then that would put, that would be into our, just, just shy of moderate flood level. So again, yesterday on my drive, if you've been out in the county, the fields are, virtually most of the fields are dried up. There are some with some ponding and pooling. Some of the ditches are very full. There's some issues. Most of the ditches are flowing decent, but there will be some issues with drainage, with ditches being plugged, still froze up, and then also culverts. A lot of times, culverts will get plugged with debris. A lot of times vegetative debris from fields. But our 10-day forecast does look extremely well. We kind of dodged a bullet on that last moisture event.
So I had talked to our county engineer this morning, and Noah had been at a meeting at the watershed where they did talk about needing to pop up, open some of those, those culverts. They're, the engineer's shaking his head that they're in the process of doing that. I did notice this morning, a couple that were plugged last night opened up overnight. Can you, one, the rain event last night must not have, I know your estimates were as of yesterday, but that was not a substantial amount of moisture last night.
Yeah, nothing that affected our river, river levels here.
And Gabe, can you talk a little bit about why we go through the process of declaring a flood emergency right now? We know that this is not going to be, hopefully, a catastrophic flood unless we get six inches of rain, but can you talk a little bit about that?
Right. So this is a, this is a preemptive declaration, essentially. The nice thing about a flood emergency is we can tend, you know, we generally can see it coming. Again, last week, things looked much different in the forecast, the snowpack. But some of the reasons why I think it would still be prudent for us to go to a state of emergency is it begins the clock essentially. If we, let's say, Clay County does incur some costs due to damage from floodwaters, a road washes out, culverts wash out, we have to hire, you know, additional contractors to come in and clear ditches, culverts, debris removal is a big thing. Usually after a, a high-water event, there'll be a lot of debris piled up at culverts or bridges. Those costs set up quite rapidly. By being in a state of emergency, that, that basically starts the clock for us. So if any state or federal dollars would be available to help with that, we can, we could at least look at recouping those. If we are not in a state of emergency, any of that funding and work done pre, pre-state of emergency would not be eligible. So that's, and also, we need to keep in mind that the city of Moorhead is in Clay County, and even, even the Red River being in moderate flood level does trigger a lot of mitigation response from them. So closing river gauges, taking, like the 15th Avenue North Bridge, for instance, tends to go under much lower than anything else. So they, there's wiring and signs and stuff that come down there. So their costs, they will incur costs, too. And that does, their costs count towards the county disaster amount, which if we had a certain level, does make us eligible for state aid.
Great. Thank you so much for clarifying that. So presented in the packet is a request for the approval of Resolution 2022-10.
Madam Chair, I just, I agree with Gabe that this resolution, it's more of a, it's also a protection measure for potential reimbursements in the event of a, it turns into something more severe through working with FEMA. And that clock doesn't start until this board does what's being asked of us today. It's not, this isn't meant to put fear in anybody that there's going to be a flood, because right now, we're, we're obviously not expecting that. But at the same point in time, as you, as you talked with our township officials yesterday, you told them about keeping track of their costs that would be associated, whether they're on the branches of the Buffalo River or wherever they are, ditches, that work that Dave has to do. So it's for that reason that, that we're doing this today, too, to keep the clock in our favor.
Correct.
So, but it certainly isn't meant to.
No, no, there's, at this point, there would be nothing that would indicate we're looking at, you know, private property or residential issues with flooding or, you know, not.
It's more of an infrastructure thing.
Correct, correct. Because there will be, and there already is some roads in the county that are underwater, and there will be more, even once we, you know, get into moderate flood stage, some of the secondary roads, not, not our major roads. But they will require some work after the waters recede.
Based on those reasons, I would move Resolution 2022-10.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-10 from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. And there, any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you. Gabe, now you have the next one.
Number two is an ARPA request. We are requesting $30,000 to be, to be divided between the six emergency rescue services through, located throughout rural Clay County. So the funds would be divided equally, 5,000 per each rescue service. And I'll just give you a quick background and kind of a layout of some of the reasons why COVID has affected them so adversely. So in Clay County, the rescue services are Barnsville Ambulance, Saban Fire and Rescue, Glendon Fire and Rescue, Holly Hurt, Felton Rescue, and U.N. Glendon Fire and Rescue, Holly Hurt, Felton Rescue, and Uland Rescue. And each of these organizations are, are, are organized slightly different. But all of them have felt the effects of COVID in their call volume, um, operations costs, and inability to hold fundraisers, um, and a decrease in donations. And, uh, really another thing was increased difficulty in recruiting new members, um, just because of COVID. Obviously, people that are volunteering their time to, you know, go on medical calls, um, there just isn't that, uh, isn't that wish for people or desire for people to do that during COVID. It's been affected. These rescue groups do not receive dedicated training dollars from a state such as fire departments do. Some of these groups rely solely on donations and receive, um, no dedicated funding from townships, cities, or the county. Um, and their call volumes, I'll just kind of run down their call volumes a little bit. So between these, uh, the call volumes, I'm gonna, um, give you our, a combination of all six of these groups. So in two thousand eighteen, um, these six groups responded to one thousand one hundred and thirty calls for service. In two thousand nineteen, one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. In two thousand twenty, that dropped a little bit, one thousand ninety-seven. But in two thousand twenty-one, uh, the number rose rather significantly, one thousand two hundred and ninety-six. So that's a hundred and fifty-eight calls more than the previous high, which was two thousand nineteen. These call numbers will likely continue to increase due to the increased development and growth in our rural areas and an uptick in mental health, mental health-related calls for service. And I guess I would make the argument that, uh, some of these, uh, the mental health type calls, which have increased substantially, um, are a result of, uh, COVID or COVID-related issues. You know, people being shut in on their houses, um, just, uh, people maybe not wanting necessarily to go to the hospital because they're afraid of, um, COVID in the hospital. And then operations costs. I'll, I'll describe you a little bit about, um, the, the challenges with operations cost, costs, again, due to COVID. Um, so due to inflation, supply chain, and more recently, fuel prices, um, operation costs are up considerably. For instance, um, batteries for a portable radio, um, forty, forty to fifty percent price increase since COVID, depending on the type of battery. So pre-COVID, um, there's different qualities of batteries that you can put on a portable radio. The low end of that pre-COVID was like a thirty-dollar battery, high-end, which is the kind that most, uh, most groups use, about a hundred and twenty. Currently, if you can even find the batteries, because I've been trying to order them for the last few months, they're on backorder for most everywhere, um, battery prices are sixty-nine to a hundred and eighty dollars a battery. Think of most of these rescue agencies, um, they give their members, each of their members is issued a portable radio. So Felton, for instance, which is probably our smallest membership, has seven members. That's quickly adds up. You buy new batteries for your radios, you got a overall gram distant batteries. Lucas Device, which is a device that is powered by, um, batteries, they're usually like a forty-volt battery, um, that does CPR, chest compressions on a patient. Batteries for a Lucas Device, um, currently are seven hundred and fifty-five to eleven hundred dollars per battery. The machine runs on two batteries. Pre-COVID, um, the prices I just gave you would buy you a set of two batteries. Fuel prices, uh, two thousand eighteen, the average price of fuel per gallon was two seventy-nine, um, now it's three eighty-nine. Um, and one of the ones that really was shocking to me was Nitro Gloves, just the rubber, the blue rubber gloves, the blue rubber gloves. Two thousand eighteen, the price per a hundred-count box, um, just if you buy a single box, you get a little price break if you buy a whole case, was approximately seven dollars and seventy-five cents. In two thousand nineteen, when the big PPE scare was going on, twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents for a price, uh, for a box of gloves. Currently, the price is back down to thirteen eighty per box. We're still looking at about a hundred percent increase in the, in the price for just a box of rubber gloves. Um, fundraising and donations, um, several rescue services rely heavily on fundraising and donations. Um, following CDC, MDH, and local public health guidance, uh, some of these rescue groups did not hold fundraiser, fundraisers in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Now, I know personally, um, Felton Rescue and Uland Rescue, they pretty much rely solely on their fundraiser and then donations. And another thing that is kind of a weird side effect of COVID is, uh, donations. So a lot of these groups receive memorial donations. Um, during COVID, there may have been more deaths, but, uh, think of funeral attendance. Um, a lot of times, uh, members of communities go to funerals, leave a donation, please, you know, give to Felton Rescue. Their donations were affected just because some of that, those things weren't happening like they normally would have. And then membership, recruiting new members, uh, has been, was extremely di- difficult prior to COVID. But once COVID started, some of the existing members, um, were not active due to COVID. Um, some of the older members, maybe some of the members that are business owners, that, uh, if they came into contact with COVID, aren't able to go and work their normal jobs. They don't get workman's comp from their place of work if they can't go to work because they were on a volunteer rescue call. So it, it did, what this did was, some of the members that normally would be active, weren't as active, and it put a huge strain and burnout on the members that were still active. So some of these groups have been relying on really a couple of members, kind of taking the bulk of the call load for the last couple of years. I did get some numbers, um, um, I'm bringing on a new member, just some pricing. Uh, Westall from Felton Rescue sent me just a, a quick rundown of what it costs them to bring on a new member. Um, initial training, just throwing them through the EMS, uh, the initial EMR training, would be emergency medical responder training, um, costs them six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Uh, the EMS bag, which each member has and carries with them, that is stocked with some EMS supplies, is six seventy-five. Uh, radio is two thousand. Uh, to outfit them with jacket and shirts, uh, high-vis vests and stuff is about three hundred and fifty. So the total Wes gave me was three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, um, to bring on a new member. So you can see quick, very quickly, if they can even get new members, it, it, it really takes a chunk of their budget, especially when they haven't been getting the donations and the funds, uh, that they previously were. And I guarantee you, Wes's numbers are extremely low. I, I'm guessing he got these numbers pre-COVID. I know radios right now, portable radios, are more in the range of three to five thousand dollars a radio. So I, I guess the reason I'm here asking for these funds is to just help them with their operating costs. The funding will help with, uh, with increased operations costs and eases the burden of bringing on new members. I would like to remind you, um, the Commissioners, that all of these people that serve on these organizations, they do not do it for the pay, they do not do it for the recognition, they do it because they care about their communities, they care about their neighbors, um, and they do it just, you know, they're the type of people that, that want to make their community a better and safer place to live in.
Thank you, Gabe. Commissioner Campbell has a question.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I have a comment, and, uh, Gabe did present this to our ARPA committee, and we had some discussion about it, and we certainly, um, did support Gabe bringing this forward today. And, uh, what we did do is we asked him to provide some numbers, and when you asked Gabe to provide numbers, uh, you got them today, and.
I'm a cop. I don't, numbers are not.
Right, but, but you, you know, you did an excellent job, and clearly, it shows that all of these, basically, volunteer entities is what they really are, um, during COVID needed this additional support. And, um, our ARPA committee, um, felt this was deserving of this request, so.
Commissioner Kaylee. Um, I'm wondering how we arrived at the thirty thousand dollar number, so it works out to five thousand for each?
Yeah, I, um, it, it's so hard to come up, at least in my mind, it's so hard to come up with a specific number for each agency because they're, it's like comparing apples and oranges. Felton is a very small, as far as membership, their call volume is, say, less than like a Holly or a Barnesville, but their response area is huge. And I guess my thought is, um, Felton, who does struggle probably the most with membership in Clay County, just for them to bring on a couple of members, um, is very, you know, that takes a good chunk of their budget. Now, whereas you have, say, the Holly Hertz or the Barnesville Ambulances, which are responding to, um, greater number of calls, their, their expenses are going to come in the, in the PPE, um, fuel, things like that, just because their call volumes are higher. So I, I just felt that that number i- is a good number. Again, none of them can really give me a definite on how much they lost because of, um, maybe not being able to hold fundraisers. Um, I just feel like that is a good number to help them, um, put some people through training, and then kind of supplement their operations costs, and it's fair of a way as I can think of doing it, um, versus trying to, um, you know, give one thousand and one eight thousand or.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I mean, Gabe's done a great job of showing the need for this, and, and, uh, that immediate action is incumbent on us to make the decision on this, but I think something else needs to be taken into, into account here. The information that you're giving us is something the public needs to be aware of. People need to get out there and volunteer again. You know, in our communities out in, in the rural part of the county, there's never been a huge issue about people stepping up when they need to help their neighbors out. Uh, COVID's kind of got everybody off kilter, and I really am concerned when I hear that they're having trouble getting the donations that they, they need to sustain themselves and getting the manpower, the boots on the ground to go out there and, and provide these services. So while we can do this in the immediate, I think, long-term, I hope these communities and neighbors will talk among each other and get committed to this, these programs again, because they're essential. And I appreciate you bringing the kind of information you did to us today to, to, to back that up.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the idea of each of them getting the same amount, I, I think it's appropriate. In any event, it's not going to make them whole for what they've lost. You know, we're doing the best that we can, uh, through the different areas with ARPA, to assist in as many ways as we can. Going back to, uh, when we helped all of our business communities in the rural areas, what we gave them wasn't nearly enough to solve their problem, but it was what we could do to help, to keep them going. And, and I think that's kind of what your intention was here when you made the request for the thirty thousand and five thousand each was, was just to help them.
Correct, yeah.
But I, I don't, even the smallest entity probably still has seen a greater impact than the five thousand.
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you. I also just want to comment that I think we've done as best a job we can to make sure that we're addressing all the, the different areas of need within Clay County, based on what, how COVID did affect them, and, and for knowing that, um, if I had an emergency at my home, one of these agencies would be the one responding, and for that, that's true for a lot of, um, the people served by these. And the, these are not paid professionals that hop on a ambulance to, um, come to your home. A lot of times, these are folks that have gear bags in their cars that are responding on their way home from work or after church or whatever. These are really, um, volunteers, um, answering the call to help their neighbors. And I agree, I think, um, any one of these agencies, if there was ever a need in terms of, of someone that needs a benefit because of cancer, these are the people that organize this. And, um, I think Commissioner Ebinger really did bring up an important piece of information. We, at some point, with the growing, um, nature of our county, need to address, um, emergency service response and organization within the county at some point. Uh, that conversation needs to happen. I know that we've kind of, um, tiptoed around it for a variety of years. One, we do need more volunteers, and how do we recruit? I know we've had those conversations with Uland Rescue, how do we help them, uh, recruit? But I think this is a good start, and I certainly, um, feel that it's justified based on the needs that, um, were presented because of the pandemic. Commissioner Campbell.
On behalf of the ARPA Committee's review, I would move approval of the Merchant Management, Management Director's request for thirty thousand in ARPA funds for those six entities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Kaylee, I think a second and, or a third and a fourth. Certainly, this board understands this need. Any further discussion?
I would just probably put Gabe on the Budget Committee, too, so we can look, get some figures together for that.
We'll add that to your resume. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you very much, Gabe, and you'll communicate with them on that. Thank you very much. Item eleven this morning is a request for approval to advertise for the yearly supply bids. Our county engineer, David Overbow, and Justin's with you as well. Well, do, uh, the agenda addition did come out, yep. Can we do the bids first?
Right. Yes, so the first item we have is an approval to advertise for yearly supply bids. So yearly supply bids include gravel, bituminous mixture, culvert, and the rental of construction equipment. We would be looking to open bids on April twenty-first in this boardroom. We would tab, tabulate the bids and then bring back the abstracts to be approved at the regular county board meeting on April twenty-sixth.
Okay. Forward questions?
Make a motion to approve, uh, to advertise for bids.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to, uh, approve the advertising of bids for the yearly supply. A second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted. And your agenda addition?
Uh, we have been asked by a group that's putting together a large interregional corridor for a, a bikeway. It's called USBR, US Bike Route Twenty, and it shows a bike route going from Wisconsin through the entire state of Minnesota and connecting with North Dakota. And they had asked for a, a support resolution from our board, and, uh, if you guys have all seen the, the route there, there's the route through Clay County. It's, uh, mainly essentially on Highway fifty-two and connects kind of between Barnesville and City of Moorhead, and then can continue on kind of through Lakes area and down, um, all the way to St. Cloud. And like I said, I think, uh, in their letter, it looks like it connects with Wisconsin. It's, it's a designation only, and it's on routes with paved shoulders, um, so that they can show connectivity. Back about five years ago or so, um, when the MetroCog does a lot of this very same sort of thing, they showed, uh, a large metro bike and pedestrian plan, and, um, in January of two thousand seventeen, they did come to our board and ask for a support resolution of the two thousand sixteen Fargo-Moorhead Metro Bike Pedestrian Plan. Uh, there's the resolution that we did approve at that time, and then if we have just that picture of the mapping, that it kind of shows the rural area that, as it goes down through, it's essentially the same route. It goes, uh, it encompasses fifty-two, it encompasses, um, Clay County number two between Barnesville and Comstock, as well as, uh, Clay County ten is another portion. A lot of our roads do have six and eight-foot shoulders. We looked at Highway fifty-two between Moorhead and Barnesville, and there's, uh, eight-foot shoulders, I believe, down to Saban. And then from Saban down to, through Barnesville, it's got six-foot shoulders. And then the little piece south of Barnesville to the county line's got like a four-foot shoulder that we, when we reconstructed that road about ten years ago or so. So it, it does have adequate width, uh, to handle the designated route. Like I said, there won't be any change, there's no construction, they're not asking for any funds. They just, uh, are asking the locals along this route for support of their designation.
Well, certainly, this is an exciting opportunity. I know, as is the case with, um, grants, and specifically sometimes transportation grants, uh, it, um, comes up quickly, and an action needs to happen fast. And so, um, thank you to the board for, um, for allowing this to be on the agenda today. I think it's, it certainly would be an exciting opportunity if, if we're able to secure this, or not we, but, um, if the state would be able to. I had encouraged you to talk with MetroCog to see if that board could get that on the agenda. I know they'll meet, the executive board will meet, um, the beginning of April, so I think that might be too late. But, um, just to have them aware of it as well might be helpful. And I do see it's Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven. I don't have the resolution on me, but just the map. Clean.
I've got, uh, I've got copies if you want me to hand the.
Uh, it's just as long as our, um, administration and legal is aware of it. I have the number.
I'm aware, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'd move the Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Yeah, one quick question.
Commissioner Kaylee.
I know you said this is just a designation. Um, are there any implications for maintenance of this route for us at all?
No, uh, as part of that previous revolution, uh, with the MetroCog, it's kind of states their, minimal maintenance is some roadway sweeping, I guess is the biggest thing for the most part. So they did not ask for anything with this designation, but I think with. So they did not ask for anything with this designation, but I think with our previous, you know, agreeing that this would be as part of their bike plan is, we agreed to some minimal sweeping. And it's mostly right around just south of Morehead on that first six miles or so. I think that's where most of the rocks and debris and different things are. So when asked, we run a sweeper down there and sweep the shoulders a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the resolution is carried. Thank you.
I've got little packets, you want me to hand those out quick? It shows that resolution?
Yeah.
If you guys can hand that out.
I can look at it, just to have anyway. Thank you. And you, do you want to coordinate, sorry, do you want to coordinate with Cindy Gray about MetroCog?
I sure will.
Okay. We can get them to sign on that, would be great.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, guys. Our next item this morning would be item 12, our committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start today?
Sure. Sorry, turn my mic on. Tuesday, the 15th, following board, we had our county work group meeting. We talked about redistricting and got updates on detox and ARPA, and there will be minutes from that meeting shared eventually, correct, Steve?
Yes.
Thank you. After that, I had our Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council meeting. We had a good discussion from entities that attended that meeting. Officer Derek Swenson from the Morehead Police Department reported that there is going to be a change in how they respond to calls with suicidal individuals to make sure that they have the proper folks responding to those calls. So it may not be the police that respond, it might be different community groups, or they might be redirected to 211 depending on how that conversation goes with the individual when they make that call, whether or not they have a plan, whether or not there are weapons present, et cetera. So to make sure that we don't have officers responding and have a threat of use of deadly force when not necessary. Mobile mental health was also in attendance at that meeting, and they talked about a change to one of their policies as well. Previously, they had not been able to transport individuals across the river to Fargo to an emergency department, and they will be making a change to that. So they will try every avenue to find a friend or a different, a family member to give them a ride to the emergency department so that they have support with them while they're there. If that's not available for the individual, then mobile mental health staff will now be able to transport them to the emergency department at Sanford or Ascenda in Fargo, but they will just be dropping them off. We also heard from A Place for Hope that their coolers have arrived that we had provided some support for. There was quite the process to get those coolers there and installed, but they are now installed, and the electrical work was supposed to be completed the end of last week. So those should be up and rolling soon. I had a conversation with Daryl, the director, at the very end of that meeting about the Great Plains Food Bank is charging them for the food that they're receiving now. So I will skip ahead to Friday. Then I went and met with Daryl at A Place for Hope, got a tour, saw the new coolers, and he laid out some of his past orders and financial details for me to to show what's going on with Great Plains Food Bank and the orders that they've been placing. So previously, they had been charged maybe $10 to $30 for some more premium items for folks. But now, due to increased food costs and transportation costs and stuff, Great Plains Food Bank is having to charge minimum amounts for pretty much all of their things that they are distributing to food pantries. And his most recent order was around $400. So that may be a discussion coming before the ARPA committee down the road because that's not sustainable.
I just, so I just want to ask, you know, I know, you're on the Cass Clay Food Partners, and the Great Plains Food Bank is present at that, so I think you can have those discussions. I thought we specifically asked, though, if the cool, with the addition of coolers, what, I think the understanding was, if they incurred additional costs to secure more food, that there was an understanding this was a one-time cost for coolers. And I, I mean, I get that we're all, I get that we have additions, but I just want to clarify, that's what the agreement with Daryl and the conversations at ARPA were.
Okay. This is not a higher-than-normal order for him. This is just like a standard order for standard things. It's just that Great Plains Food Bank is not able to cover their own costs, and so they're having to pass that on to the food pantries. I did request that the Cass Clay Food Commission have a discussion on this. It has not been brought up in that group yet.
And I, I think, just as further note, I, it was my understanding the Great Plains Food Bank was picking up foods that were the excess that would go to waste otherwise at different suppliers. And so I understand they need to pay for their costs for the transportation and whatnot, but we just need to figure out what that hiccup is and iron it out.
Tuesday evening, there was a legislative update with Senator Ekin, Representative Markort, and Representative Keeler that was recorded, and folks in the community can still view that online if you are interested in what's going on and the updates and what our representatives are working on there. Wednesday, the 16th, we had an emergency meeting for our Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. It was an emergency meeting because last week we heard about a staff member that's leaving Social Services from Child Protection. That staff member happened to be the chair of that committee, so we needed to quickly elect a new chair and pass on checkbook signing permissions. So thank you to Michelle Thorndall for taking on those duties there. That evening, I attended the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Board meeting. They have a new exhibit that just opened up, and there is a free opening reception tonight from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that exhibit is Stories of Local Black History, which profiles African-American citizens and new Americans of Fargo-Morehead from the late 1800s to the present. It highlights businesses, social events, and travel details of individuals as chronicled in The Appeal, which was a St. Paul-based newspaper that shared the comings and goings of African-American society all over the U.S. And other local media and historical documents inform that as well. It shares wonderful stories of some of our local individuals and leaders in our community, and I would encourage everyone to go check out that exhibit. Then on Thursday, the 17th, in the morning, we had the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development Meeting. Commissioner Ebinger was also in attendance at that. They shared a lot about the evolution of a big project with North Dakota soybean processors, which is going to be taking place on the other side of the river, as well as their, what they're calling their strategic playbook for how they're going to be working in our region. Commissioner Ebinger swayed the board not to take action and approve that strategic playbook until it's more clearly spelled out how they will be working on this side of the river in particular, but regionally. And then I'm sure he has some other notes that he will share about that meeting as Following that meeting, I attended the West Central Initiative Economic Development District meeting. We had some conversation on how some of our counties are using some of our relief dollars. Becker County has a program where they're doing $10,000 startup grants to increase childcare capacity, and that sounded interesting. Morris, Minnesota, is addressing climate change through solar energy and waste reduction. And then there was just a highlight on different ways that West Central is taking steps into positive climate action. They highlighted some, a program where there are partner cities in Minnesota as well, partnered with European cities to talk about sustainable energy initiatives and addressing climate change. So that was that meeting. Later that evening, I attended MetroCog as an alternate for Jenny. There were, there was, let's see, two things we approved. There was an amendment to the 2022 to 2025 Transportation Improvement Plan. So we had a, an open public hearing on that. All those things were on the North Dakota side. We did talk a little bit as well about the bicycle and pedestrian count and how they do those counts, how they track that. And it looks like around our region, bicycle and pedestrian traffic is up on our trails. And the data that they're collecting through those counts really helps us to see where we might want to focus development or invest dollars to see where community members are enjoying those trails. Friday, I said, I already reported that I had met with Daryl Vasvik at A Place for Hope. Oh, part of that meeting as well at A Place for Hope, other than just to talk about the Great Plains Food Bank, was also to talk about they're seeing increasing numbers of folks speaking something other than English as a primary language coming through there looking for food assistance. And so we are connecting up Azad to start working with them on how to better serve those individuals there. Yesterday, we all attended the Township Officers Meeting. That was a fabulous meeting, as always. Those folks are so invested in their communities, and it's wonderful just to get together with them. Thank you to Lauren, who led a meditation on the significance of the flag when we did the pledge at the beginning, Lauren Ingberthson. He writes spectacular poems. I think he's written hundreds of reflections on the flags. Steve shared a little bit about what's going on with the county, and then we had reports from a variety of our county departments. David and Justin reported on the Highway Department. I don't know how in-depth I should go with all of this. I have pages of notes from that meeting, but they shared about upcoming projects that they have and how that would affect some of the townships. Sheriff Empting talked a little bit about his staffing and how phone scams have really increased, and folks should be aware about that. Kathy McKay gave an update, as well as Kent Severson talked about septic inspection and the need for those to be inspected before sale. If you are going to be selling a property in the winter, you should at least apply for that inspection to take place, and then that will be done as soon as possible. Those inspections are good for three years. Nancy Gunderson shared about the increases they were seeing around the county to different types of land and sales, and shared that a packet with very specific information would be going out to all of those townships to take a look at that information. Gabe Tweeden was there and encouraged township officers to take pictures pre and post damage for flood stuff to make sure that we have good documentation and some of the resources that he has available. We also had Matt Jacobson and Mandy Olson and Kurt Cannon and Kirk Rosenberg, Janelle Cheney, and then SWCD folks up there at that meeting as well. Thank you to all who participated. It was a great morning. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Campbell.
Madam Chair, I just want to go back to one of Commissioner Kaylee's early conversations in a meeting that she had, and she mentioned about Becker County, I believe it was, and some startup grants for daycare. You know, I really think it's appropriate for, as I know, most counties throughout the state have had some discussions through ARPA on ways to improve childcare or daycare, which is the most appropriate to call it. But I, I really think that, I, I do like the idea of startup grants. When you, and I, but I also know there are some available already. But I, I do believe that, that that's an appropriate place for us to, at some point, look at to help try to improve our shortages. When people go to apply to or want to become daycare, the first thing that we do in the licensing process is we tell them what they have to do within their homes to make it appropriate. And those things come with a cost. And, you know, I, I think we need to have that conversation. I, I don't know that, I wouldn't be ready to suggest a dollar amount yet, but we have to see what is available in those grants from other resources. I, I would suggest maybe that we try to reach out to Jessica Mickelson, who supervises that, that area within the county, and see what they think to maybe give a presentation to the ARPA group. So I, I like the idea. We can never get, especially when it comes to infant care, has really been a really demand. And so anything that we can do to, I've talked to several young adults now, they're going through the process where they've just had kids, and they really have a hard time finding that from, that daycare from that 12-week period to, to the time they're one, because they, these daycare facilities can only have so many in one, in one setting. So I like the idea, and I, I think we need to have that discussion.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring that.
Commissioner Gross.
On Tuesday, I was involved also in that work group we had after a regular commissioner meeting. I used to go over it again because we were all here. Friday, I went to retirement for Carrie Solby at Motor Vehicle Department. She had, they had a retirement there for her, attended that. And then yesterday, the Township Officers Meeting, I guess Commissioner Kaylee covered that very well, so I just want to thank all the people that, from our staff that showed up the gifted reports. It's very good to hear from them and explain that to the township officers. And last night, I went to the, I was a little bit late for the FM diversion, so I'll probably attend that tonight and see what they got to present. I had some conflicting meetings, so I'll try again tonight. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I want to, so last Tuesday evening, I did attend, as I mentioned earlier, I did attend the Clay County Planning Commission meeting and the presentation that Matt did regarding our comprehensive plan. That, that was voted on and approved to move forward to our board. I think we're going to see that in April. We'll have a public hearing on that. And, and of course, that, that afternoon, I think Commissioner Kaylee just touched on the work group that we had. the work group that we had after a board meeting. I also attended the retirement party for Carrie Solway from DNV, and we certainly want to thank her for her many years of service, and, and we wish her well in her, enjoying her retirement, well-deserved retirement. Yesterday, I attended the Township Officers Meeting, and that's been addressed, no need to go over that anymore. But again, I, I agree, we certainly want to thank all of our department heads for being there and, and all of the township officers who do a lot of important things in those rural communities. And then last, or then in the afternoon, we had a transfer station meeting, and something of real significance that we need to talk a little bit about here is the, what's happened this winter in terms of winter, winter work that was done. They had, in, in our GMP, in the contractor contingency, and I'm referring to the contractor's contingency piece, we had a total of, original contract had $871,000 in there, and that's technically is county money. But they have, under the contractor contingency, they have the right to use that if they need it. And so what's, you know, so we had approved several thousand dollars. And, but what we found out here this winter through January, there has been about 260-some-thousand dollars worth of additional costs associated with their need to basically win, keep things moving in the winter. The fuel needed to warm the soils so that they can dig and do all of, to keep the project moving. And so they had a total in their contractor, original GMP, they had a total, I believe it was 50,000, Steve?
Fifty-five.
$50,000 on that line item in the contractor contingency. Through January, they have spent about 262. They are expecting that number to probably double because of February and into early March when we had that. So we're looking at a, a number that they had anticipated of 50,000 reaching 500,000. with the, with the number that they proposed right now, the 212,000, that would bring our remaining number down in our contractor, or our construction contingency to about 360,000. But now that we're not, that isn't here today for approval on that, but, but that's something that they have the right to do and the ability to do under contract. Alls we can do is, you know, really, so that 360, and then when you look at February, you know, with the numbers there, if you look at it, maybe another 150,000 for that, you know, that 360 now is going to come down to maybe $200,000 left in that contractor contingency that for the entire remaining project. So there, that's, that's of significant concern to us. And we certainly address all the, Commissioner Mojo and I and Steve addressed that with them yesterday. So we're going to need to monitor that, the good news. And, and I think you, you know, for Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Ebinger, who were, were on the board at the time when we did the, especially the, the jail piece, they even, they told us that the contractor contingency, the vast majority of it usually is used up in underground work. And, and that was the case. So for example, in that case, we had significant increases because they found fuel tanks they didn't know were there. So these are the surprises that we have. We just need to keep you aware of them. I think they're pretty confident in, in moving forward after this, that, that they've got most things covered under the design costs, but it's just a little bit alarming. I know Commissioner Mojo will maybe add to that under her report as well. But we do have a GMP, and that, you know, they, they have to provide us with the finished product under that GMP contract. But that's going to be one that we're going to have to really monitor. Other than that, you'll notice if you drive by there, there's steel going up. It looks good. It's exciting to see it finally taking shape. And last night, I did attend the diversion authorities' flowage easement open house at the Law Enforcement Center, and it was basically for those landowners. It happened to, there were actually a couple that had missed the ability to, to go to the Cass County ones, so they came over here last night as well. And I know that we had some Clay County residents that had gone over to the Cass County ones to get their information. And the presentation on behalf of the, of this, the diversion authority staff was really good, and I think it was well-received. I, you know, those people don't like the project down there, there's no question about that, but I think they're, they're, they're seeing that there's been a lot of work put into this process for, on their behalf, so. And again, there's another one tonight at, from six till whenever it finishes. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
There we go. I also attended last Tuesday, the work group that's already been touched on by everyone that we had after our usual commission meeting. On the 17th, I attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Board Meeting over at Order State's Electric Building. There was a, an extensive project, or a program put on with consolidated grain and barge with the North Dakota soybean processing plant that's going in over at Castleton. A lot of good figures on that. I won't go too deep into the weeds on this, but I think the EDC did a good job of coming up with the numbers that addressed a lot of the financial incentives for a community to bring in a, a project like this and give some tax incentives. The presenter himself from, from CGB did a good job of showing prior good neighbor relationships in other communities where they operated and addressed some of the concerns from, from the people around Castleton. We had a, a pretty good, long presentation on strategic planning. This has been a process going on for about the last year. We covered the core purpose, core mission, core values, core audience, and strategic pillars around the, the planning that's taken place. I did bring up my concerns about extensive discussions we had during the planning of this about Minnesota's services and needs, and a relationship had yet to be brought to tangible, and it's early, but tangible actions on part of the EDC to locate in Minnesota, and that I didn't see anything reflected in the strategic plan that specifically addressed those concerns. Dr. Kraft from Concordia had some good observations where he expressed the same concerns. The Commissioner of Deed from the state of Minnesota will be presenting for the Chamber of Commerce next week, and there's
This week.
This week, yes, sorry. It's, it's the start of a new week.
Tomorrow.
There should be a meeting. I've not received the specifics on it, but among some of us local leaders, and we need to have a discussion with him on that.
Commissioner Ebinger, it is at 2:15 tomorrow, and I have the information to forward to you. So you and I, and along with Steve, will be present.
Wonderful. I think that will address a lot of the concerns we've had, along with some of the planning that I've been assured the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC has to locate. And I did stress in my conversations the need to not just include Moorhead, but to include the entire Clay County area and our rural communities as well in offering services. We do support, as a county, we support the EDC. I hope we continue to support the EDC, but that affords an opportunity for some of our rural communities to also benefit from what I think is a very effective operation. So that's going to be work in progress, but we continue to, to have those conversations in the board meeting. I, I left feeling good that our concerns were being heard. Later that day, Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC had a tour of the new Moorhead Public School Career Academy. And I know we're, I don't want to go too long into this, I could talk for the next 30 minutes. Just want to tell you, wow. This is bringing to the students of Moorhead Public Schools and, and to
Delaware?
DGF. DGF, I'm sorry. My gosh, I blanked. DGF students are also part of this. This is a great opportunity. Our kids are going to be able to leave with licensure and things like welding, auto mechanics, where they're employable when they come out the door, if they apply themselves for a three-year period. Or they can leave with 40 college credits under their bill. Every student in the high school will do a, a class over in that facility, and it is a beautiful, top-notch facility. I know that right now, there's money that our, our legislators are working, trying to bring in another $10 million that will augment some of the good work that's being done. But I strongly recommend anyone with an interest in this to get a tour of that facility. You're going to be impressed. Another thing that really hit me as, as an important thing for our community is they have an agricultural stream on this where kids can learn about how to run a farm, what to do in the agricultural end of it. They're trying to bring back DECA and some other groups that have been gone for a long time, and it, you know, this validates their, their commitment to the community, because that's going to help our ag community here. Very impressed with, with the tour on that, and appreciate Jeremy Larson, who gave us the tour, just, just a real positive thing for our community. I attended the Clay County Association of Township Officers yesterday. I want to thank Steve for emceeing that and getting our staff in there. We did a great job of showing how much great work we do with, you know, for our rural, our townships. And then yesterday, after that, I went to the Law Enforcement Center. This is a little off my county portfolio, but I do want to mention it. Moorhead Police Department swore in two new officers, but they also gave Medal of Valor to Officer Eric Zimmel, or he's Detective Zimmel now. He had disarmed a person who was involved in a, in a conflict. He responded, the guy had an automatic, semi-automatic pistol. He concealed on himself with one in a chamber. Zimmel was close to him, realized what was happening, disarmed him, with the help of other officers, overpowered him, and got him in custody. And it's just a great example of what our deputies and our officers do in this community on a regular basis, and I want to give a, an acknowledgement to that. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last Tuesday, I also attended the county work group. I feel like there's really good topics, and I appreciate the input of everyone that was present on that. Just an item of clarification, if that's not a committee that we're taking official action on, do we still publish meeting minutes?
We've had discussion about that, Madam Chair, and so I, I believe that what I advised Steve was previously, is that we have to take minutes, but we wouldn't have to publish them. But it sounded like we'd already made a space for them where they could be published, so I, I don't believe you would have to, but you've already made a space available so you could.
Okay. Let's continue to have conversations about that. I know those are meetings open to the public, but if we aren't taking official action and aren't then voting on those minutes, then how do we approve what's getting published? Maybe it's an internal conversation.
We can, we can have more.
That's, yeah, just, just an item of clarification.
I would maybe look to this, what the city council does with their committee of the whole meetings. It's kind of the very same thing.
Thank you. That afternoon, then, I also attended the Community Town Hall with Senator Ekin, Representative Markwart, and Representative Keeler. Great to see the items that they are addressing in St. Paul, hopeful that they can continue to carry some of the items of interest that we have advocated for. That evening, I attended the Planning Commission Meeting. We had a IUP request from Alexandria Gravel that did pass. We talked about, and engineer, Interstate Engineering came forward with a request for a text amendment. Certainly, a lot of, a lot of important discussion and points of view, and that is a recommendation that will come forward for this board to take action on. But sometimes the issues that the Planning Commission has to address have to do with land use, and sometimes they have to do with environmental use, and sometimes they have to address items that are for the, the well-being of people. And I think this, this text amendment would really take into account that, that item, and I'm hopeful that this board can see that when that comes forward. We did address the two new commissioner applications, or the one commissioner for planning, one for board of adjustment, so I appreciate that. And we did have a recognition of service for Steve Mortensen. Steve has just been such a valuable asset to the Planning Commission and his knowledge in the Barnesville Joint, Joint Powers planning area has really been helpful as we addressed items at the Planning Commission level, and certainly wish him the best with his new move. Last week, I also worked with staff to finalize the grant agreement from the MCP, MPCA for our resource recovery. Thankful that we were able to get that signed and move forward in terms of securing some reimbursements from them, and also addressing some of the needs in terms of inflation. So thank you to Kirk and staff, and Steve, and Brian for addressing that while I was gone, but we were able to get those, that signed. I attended the Township Officers Meeting yesterday in Dilworth. I really appreciate the 20 township officers, or 30 township officers from 20 different townships that were present, present at that meeting. It really is a chance for, from us to see the local interest from township officers and what's going on, and I think it's an opportunity for us to hear from them, what they're needing and seeing, and, and how our staff can provide services to our citizens, because really, it's, it's the most local form of government we have, and they do so much. And as one person said, they'd been on the Township Board for 40 years, so the only way to get off it is to be in the grave. But appreciate the work that they, they do for sure. And then yesterday, I attended the construction meeting out at the transfer site. If you have an opportunity to drive by, they're really making the most of the environmental challenge that spring in the valley gives them, and the building is going up quickly. I think we do, as Commissioner Campbell stated, really need to continue the value engineering piece, look where we can be conservative in terms of if it means ordering steel that's a smaller, smaller thickness to save some dollars. I know that construction engineers is really doing the best that they can there, but that $55,000 that they added into the initial proposal was based on two blizzards, and we had 11 blizzards. And that equipment and those crews, when they're on call to do the work in the winter, unfortunately, it costs money to have them stationed out there, it costs money to clear the site of the enormous amounts of snow, and while it is a painful, painful amount, and I'm concerned with what the future will be, I'm hopeful that we'll continue to, as Commissioner Campbell said, see less of that, because we're now becoming out of the ground. We did talk a lot about the, the water seepage issue, hopeful that we'll be able to, in the next four to eight weeks, address the lift station to get that water over to the pond. So hopeful we can stop that. So hopeful we can stop that cost there. And then last night, I also attended the Flowage Easement Meeting, and as someone who has really worked with folks in the area that are affected by this, I, I have never heard from them they don't understand the need. I think they certainly understand the need, and it is painful to have to address disturbances to land that people have sacrificed in order to retain in their family. I completely understand that. But I will say that the folks that are attending these meetings and the conversations that I have are, are really appreciative, that there are avenues for them to go to meetings and have presentations, and to talk with folks that, that really can walk through what the packet means. And I'm hopeful that the folks making the hard decisions in terms of acquisitions and easements will continue to be as fair and flexible with our citizens as possible. And there, no doubt, are painful decisions that people are having to make, but I, I feel that the avenues put forth now are much more fair and open than they, they were maybe eight to 10 years ago, so thank you for that. And that, I think, concludes my report, unless we want to talk about the detox piece. We did hear back from Scott Fettig from Klein-McCarthy, and they were able to quickly do that planning piece, and so we will be calling a, a meeting together for the detox committee to move forward with planning. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I also participated in the work group. Just to, to touch, one of the topics we discussed was redistricting. There's been some conversations here at this board over the last few months. As, as we've discussed, their state statute dictates the timeline in which redistricting must, must happen. The legislative redistricting was completed back in February. Cities, local cities now have the ability to, to redistrict by March 29th, which would be next week, and the county then has until April 26th. In our discussion, we, with Augur and GIS, we're going to be, we have actually put out an advertisement for a public hearing. We'll be having that during our board meeting, which the board will be given different options of choosing for redistricting, and we'll be looking again to make that decision by April 26th. But again, at that, the intent right now is to have that before you on the 12th, so.
Thank you, Steve. Just a comment on that. I think that this doesn't happen every year. As you said, this usually happens because of the census, and we have to wait for legislative districts and cities. You know, I'm not quite sure if there's a way that we can create a document that, a guiding document for someone 10 years down the, the road to see kind of how this all works, and, and certainly, I think the county is maybe at the mercy of what the city's boundaries are. Not sure if it would be appropriate, you know, next time we go through this to have the county submit preferences in terms of how we address wards or township issues, in terms of how it could affect districting, but certainly feel like maybe that would be helpful for whoever it is 10 years down the road that needs to go through this.
We can certainly work together and put together a guideline, timeline of what we've, what we've done, and different ways we can improve.
Okay, thank you.
On the 15th, that afternoon, I met with Derek LaPointe on a series of economic development issues. As you recall, that this board has provided some funding this year as part of its levy through, to the Greater Fargo-Moorhead, or excuse me, to the Moorhead Downtown, Inc. And Derek, I've invited Derek on April 19th to come and provide an update of how he's been working with the other, other cities in, in Clay County. On the 16th, I met with James O'Donnell, Jail Administrator, Kerry Tooten, Sheriff Empting, and Chief Deputy Lanson in regards to their RFP process for Correctional Health Services. They're in the process of wrapping that up, and we'll be getting that to Mr. Melton for, for review to bring before this board. Again, their contracts are, are up this, I believe, summer. They're off about a month from each other, but will be, but the RFP will include both the correctional facility and the juvenile, juvenile facility. On the 17th, I met with Azad, our Diversity and Ethnic Community Coordinator. He's been on the job about six, seven weeks now, and he's been making some good headway in getting out into the community and making those connections. We're going to probably here within the next few weeks have him come before the board just to provide an update of, of all the things that he's been involved in. I met with Joe Olson on a series of capital project issues on the 17th. Also worked with Clean closely on getting their board preparation done. That afternoon, I met, we met with a pre-meeting for the MCC JPA meeting, which will be held this Thursday. We got our acquisition status report, some discussions on the Flowage Easement, open houses that took place, and three in North Dakota last week, and then our two here on campus this week. On the 18th, I met with Kathy Tenbrook from the Minnesota Housing Assistant Commissioner and Minnesota Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness, along with Kathy McKay and Rory Beal, and we were really just kind of focusing from the state's perspective on, on the COVID preparedness planning and looking at how the state and local partners work together with the hope that, we're, we're now on the downside of that, but in the end, if, in the future, if we have to have some issues again, how we could work better. They also are looking at evaluating from the beginning how the state could have been more impactful, and so we were able to have, have some good discussion there. Yesterday, I participated in that Township Officers Association meeting that's been covered. Again, thanks to our staff for giving other time and their, their resources to, to share with what's happening there. Participated in the Resource Recovery Owners Meeting, which has been addressed. Also talked with Cecilia Amadou and, and Kiya.
Kaya.
Kaya, keep saying that. From your extension in regards to how the best way to move forward with open administrative position, we're actually going to be discussing that in PIC after this, this morning. Participated in the Flowage Easement Open House last night. Again, as mentioned, there's, one of the, the last session is tonight. Just a note, on our website, road restrictions did go into play on last Friday and, and Monday of this week, and will be in effect up to eight weeks, and so I'll take note of that. One, just following up on Commissioner Ebbinger and Commissioner Mojo's comments about Commissioner Grove coming to town, again, there is a public conference that is available if you're interested in attending on the 24th. Again, Commissioner Grove is just one of the speakers that will be there that day, and again, if you have any interest, let Colleen and I know, and we'll get you registered for that. Reminder, we have no board next week. It's, as it's a fifth Tuesday. And finally, just one last thing, a, a great example of, of our employees oftentimes are watching, watching you all on board. Rhonda's already replied and said that she's spoken with Jessica Mickelson, and they will provide some individual information in evaluating the needs for daycare.
Commissioner Campbell.
I, I wanted to clarify a statement that I made earlier in regards to the Flowage Easement when I mentioned, I, I think I mentioned that the folks down there don't like the project, and I think I'm accurate in making that statement, but they, they certainly, also the vast majority of them, do understand the need for the project. I just, I just need to clarify that there are two different things there, so I just want to clarify that. And then going to Commissioner Mojo's comment about being fair and flexible, both of us serve on that MCC JPA board along with others, and it, and it is always our intent to do exactly that with our landowners in Clay County. And what we do is we hear all the, the different appraisal things and those, and then we make decisions, and those decisions then are recommended and move on to the Diversion Authority for their final approval. So, yes, I couldn't agree more that, that, and I think it's the intent of all of us on that group, to make sure they're treated fairly and flexible, so, thank you.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.